This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for September 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. If we could start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We do have our quorum tonight. Ellen is off on vacation, so the three of us will hold the fort this evening. Opening up with anybody here for Citizen Speak. Yeah, Robert.
Robert Floyd, College Highway, speaking as town moderator. Later this evening, when you address a special town meeting, could you mention the reasoning behind this meeting on a Tuesday evening versus a Saturday morning, which we voted for in March, albeit for an annual town meeting? Special town meetings can be at any time, but I understand the 35-day rule, but just so that people know, there's a little confusion out there, especially for seniors not wanting to drive at night for the meeting. Okay, thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, Kate?
Tuesday at 10:00 AM.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kate DeSanto. I'm the Director and Shining Counselor at the Southampton Senior Center. It's officially September somehow, and it's also National Senior Center Month. I'm here today to invite you and members of our community to join us for our upcoming events and to come and see what the Southampton Senior Center has to offer. National Senior Center Month takes place every September, and this year's NCOA theme is "Powering Possibilities: Flip the Script." This theme celebrates the dynamic role that senior centers play in fostering creativity, connection, purpose, and resilience later in life. This month's programming features music, scams education, exercise classes, including our newly-added Cheer Yoga Wednesdays, information sessions, a free hearing and blood pressure clinic, and building connections through art and various meal opportunities, including an ice cream social on Thursday, September 18th, and Pancakes and Coffee with Scott, our Town Administrator, Police Chief Illingsworth, and Fire Chief Fasoli on Wednesday, September 24th. We are also the temporary home for Southampton's stunning 250th Anniversary Quilt created by Norris students, teachers, and volunteers. We hope you can join us at one of our, one or many of these events, or try to stop by and say hi while you stop and enjoy the incredible quilt. I would also like to let you know that in conjunction with the timing of National Senior Center Month and in preparation of the upcoming winter and open enrollment seasons, we will be mailing our Southampton Senior Center Welcome Packet to households of individuals age 60 and over. This brochure highlights all the resources, activities, and opportunities the Senior Center has to offer, including public benefits, counseling, and application assistance options for Medicare, LIHE per fuel assistance, SNAP, and transportation through our partnership with the Franklin Regional Transit Authority. I hope that even if individuals might not need or be interested in the programming or services we offer now, that they will know where to come or where to send their friends, neighbors, or loved ones for assistance in the future. The creation of this brochure was funded by a generous grant through the Massachusetts Councils on Aging, and postage for this mailing will be funded by the Friends of the Southampton Council on Aging. I've left a few copies of the September newsletter and the welcome brochure by the door, in case any of you want to check it out, and I hope you can join us throughout the upcoming weeks. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else for open speak? Okay, well, let us get on with the agenda. We have two, or one quick announcement first before we get into the main part of the presentation tonight, which will focus on the Hazard Mitigation Plan update in a few minutes. I would like to acknowledge that in honor of our 250th birthday, we have two proclamations, and for those that were not at the birthday party on last Saturday at the park, I'd like to just read those. We have a proclamation from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to the town of Southampton. On behalf of the residents of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon the town of Southampton this governor's citation in recognition of its 250th Anniversary in August in the year 2025, and this is signed by the Lieutenant Governor, Kimberly Driscoll, and Maura Healy, our governor. So, we have a nice certificate that we will put up. Scott will get this framed, and then, not to be outdone, we have from the House of Representatives, be it hereby known that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to the town of Southampton, Massachusetts, in recognition of their 250th Birthday. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. The 23rd day of August 2025 at the State House in Boston, and this is signed by Ronald Mariano, the Speaker of the House, and it's offered by Kelly Pease, our State Rep. So, these will be framed and put in a prominent position here at Town Hall, and if you didn't see it as you walked in the door, you should have seen the small quilt that was given to the town, done by the Yellow Quilt Shop. It was a gift to the town for our 25th Anniversary. It's right there as you walk in the door, right next to the Treasurer's window, so you can't miss it. Take a look. They did a great job on that quilt as well. So, there we go, and I think we'll get into the program. So, I think our first major issue tonight, or topic, is the Hazard Mitigation Plan update. This is something we had done several years ago, and every few years, we're required to do an update, and we have Mimi Kaplan here, who's a Senior Land Planner and Environmental Planner from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and she's been walking key officials of the town through this process for the update over the last two, three, four months, and so we'll turn it over to Mimi.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. Yeah, so we've been working, PVPC has been working with the town for, yeah, more than you said, nine, 10 months. This is the second public meeting, and we are almost at the end of the process. Once this meeting is over and I incorporate feedback from this meeting, then the plan gets sent to Mima. So, we are pretty close. This is the Hazard Mitigation Plan update, and I'll explain in the presentation what a hazard mitigation plan is. There's going to be a little bit of repeat from the last time. Sorry about that, but it has been a while, because I assume there'd be some new people tonight. And, as John mentioned, this plan was funded by FEMA, and this, all right, so I'll go ahead and say thank you to the committee, everyone that you see here who came to all of the meetings, reviewed the plan, provided inputs. We're all very helpful, really appreciate their time. So FEMA defines hazard mitigation as any sustained action taken to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property from natural hazards. And some examples of hazard mitigation are things like limiting development in high-risk areas like floodplains, retrofitting structures to protect them from hazards like flooding or high winds, drainage and flood control projects, and education and outreach, such as fire safety education would be an example. So, the plan was previously last updated in 2016. It might have been finalized in 2017. The plans are good or current for five years during that period of time. When the plan is current, the town is eligible to apply for funding from FEMA for various hazard mitigation projects. So, benefits of updating the plan, like I said, it makes communities eligible to apply for funding from FEMA. At the moment, the biggest grant program, BRIC, which is Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities, has been, the administration has decided to discontinue that grant program. I don't know if that's permanent, may come back. So, but there are a few other funding programs still available through FEMA, including the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program that's available after a disaster is declared. But there are other grant programs, especially state programs alike, municipal vulnerability preparedness, and other programs through other agencies that can fund a number of projects. So, the plan, going through the planning process identifies cost-effective actions to reduce risk, helps communities prevent future losses and save money on disasters. FEMA estimates that every dollar spent on mitigation can save $6 on future disaster losses. I recently heard a higher estimate of saving $13, but of course, it depends on the scale of the disaster you're talking about. It makes communities more resilient to natural hazards and the impacts of climate change increases, hopefully increases awareness of hazards and risks among homeowners, residents, and could save lives in the case of serious hazards and emergencies. So, there is overlap between hazard mitigation and emergency preparedness. So, emergency preparedness includes things you see on the right-hand side, including having evacuation plans, emergency shelters in place, emergency communication, doing response drills, tabletop exercises, et cetera. Hazard mitigation is broader, encompasses things like planning, zoning, regulation, open space preservation, especially preserving open space that can absorb floodwaters and stormwater, education and outreach, as I mentioned earlier, and infrastructure improvements. So, the main components of the plan were these five areas here. So, identifying the hazards, the natural hazards, that could affect Southampton, describing them, analyzing how, or assessing how those hazards impact buildings, property, and residents in Southampton, especially vulnerable populations, identifying and mapping critical infrastructure. There is a map at the back, at the end of the plan, that shows where all of the critical infrastructure is in the town, somewhat relative to hazards such as flooding. Assessing the town's mitigation capabilities, so what exists already in the town that helps the ability to mitigate hazards, things like administrative, financial capabilities, outreach and education, regulatory, things like that. And then reviewing the previous mitigation strategies, looking at what was done, what wasn't done, why wasn't it done, what would the town want to carry over to the new plan, maybe revise, and then identifying new mitigation strategies. And the steps, there were five, actually, I think six meetings. We had the first public meeting back in, I think, late fall, early winter. We completed the draft plan. This is now the second public meeting. Like I said, I will very soon submit the plan to Mima. They may request some revisions. Then I can do that quickly, resubmit it, it goes to FEMA, same process, and then, once FEMA approves the plan, the Select Board would adopt the plan, and then it's good for the next five years. So, I showed this at the last public meeting. So, this was the natural hazard risk analysis where the committee went through and looked at all of the hazards listed on the left-hand side, and updated this chart from the last plan, and some of them didn't change, some of them did change. So, they identified, so how big of a location could that hazard potentially affect in the town? What is the probability of it occurring? I mean, you know, not super scientifically, but based on previous occurrences, climate change data projections, et cetera. Only, you're only looking into the next five years, though. And potential impact from minor, which would be like minimal property damage up to critical or catastrophic, which could be injuries and death possibly. And then, based on all that, assigned a number from one to five, from highest to lowest risk. And there were no ones, so the top hazard, I guess the only two is severe snow and ice storms. That's a two, three. And then a few threes, severe thunderstorms, hurricanes, wildfire, extreme temperatures, three, four, and then earthquakes, flooding, four, so low risk, relatively low. And then the only five was dam failure, which while it could be critical or even catastrophic, the chance, the probability was very low of that occurring. So, that's why I got a five. So, climate change impacts all of those hazards that were on that previous slide, other than earthquakes, so causing either increased frequency or severity or both, or I mean, that's, you know, projections, and I think we have some, you know, some data of it already happening. So, these are projections from the Mass Climate Change Assessment from 2022, showing that top graph showing that by the end of the century, there could be almost 60 more days, over 90 degrees. Now, that's state, well, inland, so that's kind of general for the state, but that would apply to Southampton. And then, on the bottom there, the, and by, say, 2030, summer temperatures could increase an average of 3.6 degrees Fahrenheit from the historical period, which they, this, this assessment considered 1950 to 2013. By mid-century, the 1% annual chance of river flood could be three times more likely to occur. By mid to late century, there could be 65 fewer days below freezing, which might not seem like that big a problem in some ways, but it does cause issues such as like increases in tick populations, and also when you have more freeze thaw incidences that can impact infrastructure. And then by the end of the century, projecting the historical 10% annual chance of a daily rainfall event of 2.6 to 4 inches could occur four times more frequently. And I think that's actually going to happen sooner than the end of the century, because we have been seeing just a very large increase in these numbers of very heavy rainfall events. So, during the meetings and in conversation with the committee, some of the top hazard concerns that came up were power outages from high wind events, including, you know, severe thunderstorms, and also snow and ice storms. And we did meet with a representative from Eversource to talk about that. And then the risk of wildfire increasing with more frequent and severe droughts. I mean, last fall, there was an unprecedented number in the state. Luckily, nothing in Southampton. And we may be entering another severe drought. We'll see what happens. And then the impact of extreme heat on residents, especially, are we in severe drought now?
Whatever the state says.
Okay, I haven't.
The rivers are dry.
Yeah, yeah, that was pretty dry.
Just like we know when we've lost democracy. We've lost our hydrologic regime, and we are in very desperate drought. Hell, DEP.
Impact of extreme heat on residents was another concern, especially older residents and other vulnerable populations. And then localized flooding, especially in some of the floodplain areas. And these are not a complete list, but these were some of the ones that were mentioned as happening more frequently. Riverdale Road, Fomer Road, Pomeroy Meadow Road, Maple Street, Moose Brook Road, Brickyard Extension, East Street, and Gilbert Road. So, this might be a little hard to read, but I also have handouts for you if you want to read it on paper. So, these were the hazard mitigation strategies that are in the update. So, for the next five years, the goal is to, you know, implement as many as the town can, based partly on priority level and also ability to obtain funding, staff capacity. So, these first five were carried over from the last plan. So, considering additional protection of floodplains, forests and farmlands, you know, partly to reduce flood hazards, researching funding sources to set up and participate in a regional debris management plan, zoning bylaw modifications for subdivision approval, including requirements to utilize best management practices to handle drainage. So, again, addressing, it says hazards, that's primarily flooding, increasing visits by the fire department for potential Tier 2 hazardous material sites. So, even though this plan doesn't address man-made hazards, you know, if it intersects with a natural hazard, you know, you can include it. And then, looking at mitigating future, yeah, yeah.
Are there Tier 2 hazardous material sites in town?
I assume that's why that was in here, right?
Are there Tier 2 hazardous material sites in town?
Oh, oh, for potential, okay.
I'm not sure if it's relevant.
Yeah, I don't know that we have any in town at the present time. I can't think of one offhand.
Speculate, but I don't know.
Not legally zoned. Not legally zoned.
Yeah. Anyway, we might want to check that, the wording on that one, it'll.
Huh, all right. That was carried over from the last plan, and I thought we did discuss keeping it in, but we can talk about that. If that's not relevant or it's not necessary, then we can take that out. And then mitigating future losses by wildfire, potentially, by regulating development in wildfire hazard areas. So, this is just something to look at, possibly doing through zoning or like an overlay district of some kind.
That sounds expansive, and while I'm inclined in that direction, I have really big questions. Do you have model bylaws that would explain how this is done with respect to constitutional rights and all that?
I don't know that we have a model bylaw particularly related to wildfire hazard areas. I'd have to see. I would imagine they're out there. I don't know how many in Massachusetts.
Any sort of citation to the genesis for this good recommendation?
I would, yeah, I'd have to look and see what we, will we be able to provide.
And so, part of these were zoning, it was a zoning, a zoning district that was talked about, right, under this one, too?
Right. So, it says use zoning and/or a special wildfire overlay district to designate high-risk areas and specify conditions for the use and development of specific areas.
I could posit that it's a good idea, but we need a resource to actually make it so. Our planning department has no staff, no volunteers beyond the elected officers, and I have no clue what you're talking about.
So, we could change it to something like research the possibility of this, or, you know, if it felt like something that was worthwhile, if it feels like.
Well, you had participation from both the fire department and the planning.
It was really hard to get someone from the planning board there. He has.
That's what I suspected, so.
He has a job, and he wasn't able to come.
I think this one is wide of the mark.
He did, he did review it, though. I will say, the planning board did review this, and they did not, they did not flag that. He had questions about some other things.
An apple pie, but really, I don't know what we're talking about.
Let's figure out a way to, you know, just take a look at maybe rewording some of this before you send it off to Mima, just in case we need to, if we're committing ourselves to mitigating something, then we're not sure what we're doing to mitigate it, not sure what we're mitigating. Mitigating future losses by regulating development in wildfire hazard areas. If we don't know where those areas are in town, then I think we're committing to something that may be a little nebulous. I don't know.
And I'd be happy to follow up with you, because I think that there's a kernel of good idea, but it is not developed in a way that I can support.
Well, so we can either just have further conversations about it. I could also just alter the wording and send you that and say, how does this sound? Does this sound better? Or, I mean, I guess that's up to you.
Well, and maybe another chat with a couple people that were involved, especially with the, you know, related to that recommendation.
Right.
I think there are higher priority things for the planning focus.
Okay, well, let's keep going on.
I mean, I know DPW really was interested in working with them on subdivision regulations and in terms of addressing flooding, and I think.
Yes.
He, he considered that probably a higher priority. This is listed as a low priority. So.
Sorry to take up so much time.
We do, so FEMA does require that you have an action in your action plan that addresses every hazard. So, we should have something that addresses wildfire, but it doesn't mean you have to have both of these, and we can also.
Okay.
Change it completely, or we can just, you know, revise it. So, and we don't have to, we don't have to discuss it now.
Commit some staff time to work in with us. We'll chase it.
I think, you know, some revision of it, yeah.
But as you said, there are probably higher priority items for the planning board. So, you know, you can keep it in here, and it's listed as a low priority, and if you don't get to it in the next five years, it might be something for the next update, you know, it's.
But I think most likely, in, like in the past plan, we focused on the high and the medium issues. So, some of these are low, and they were, they're low, and they're still low, they were carried over, which is why they never got dealt with the last time, apparently, the way this is.
Right. But I guess, you know, the committee didn't want to just.
They didn't want to get rid of it altogether.
Just completely get rid of them, because like you said, there was some sense of that's, this is a good idea if we could do it.
Yeah, okay.
You know?
Okay.
Okay, so then these actions, the first four are high priority, and then the last three are medium, and these were all new, so not carried over from the last plan. So, purchasing a generator for the elementary school, and also installing additional cooling in the elementary school building, particularly the cafeteria, I think to be used as a shelter slash cooling center. Assessing green infrastructure opportunities for stormwater management, so that would be something for the planning board, and working with the highway. Evaluating technology used for emergency communications and interoperability, and that was something that the police chief particularly was pushing that one.
Didn't we fund the purchase of all new radios?
Those were tri-bands that we got during the CARES Act, and those were very limited. So, I think we still.
But I thought at the last Capitol, we approved new radios, at least for, was it for fire?
Fire and police were, are you guys on the same wavelength, on the same band? I thought there was an issue of reporting of fire and police not being on the same communication band.
Radios you're talking about? Yes.
Yeah.
But didn't you just get new radios?
We did, yes. We have four new ones.
So, we bought new ones that still can't talk to each other?
I don't know if the police have gotten theirs, though.
Well, we're on different frequencies.
Yeah, they're different frequencies.
I mean, we never, we've never talked to each other.
Yeah, but don't get.
That'd be too confusing to have fire on the police radio.
But your radio, you can't switch over to Channel 2 or Channel 3 and talk directly to the police?
My radio, I can, I can switch over to theirs, yes.
Right.
Not everybody on the park can know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I know it was an issue that the police chief brought up, that he wanted to see something better done with that.
All our vehicles have two radios, one's on the police, one's on fire. So, we can hear the police, but we won't go on their frequency and speak. We will go through dispatch. And police does the same thing. They never talk on our radio. They'll go, contact dispatch and say, you know.
Right, but in the event of an emergency, and the dispatch center is offline.
Right.
You do have the capability to get on that radio in an emergency and talk to the police chief.
I have it on my portable, and every vehicle has police radios, yes.
Okay. This has been a concern of the boards, and we've tried to educate ourselves and be responsive as we understand the needs. So, it may still be a high priority, as we've shown in the past. I don't think that should equate to a deficiency necessarily, but identify the next steps, and we'll fold it into the Capitol plan. we'll fold it into the capital plan.
Um, the next one was providing outreach and education on mitigation for extreme heat and cold, including information about avoiding frozen pipes and mass save rebates, sorry, this got cut off on here, um, rebates for insulation, and it's also should include heat pumps.
We hope.
No? I can't, because I printed out a new one that had the whole thing on it, but maybe you didn't get that. Um, it's primarily for insulation and heat pumps. And then ensuring communication about drought conditions and restrictions, encouraging water conservation practices, exploring the implementation of a pricing program. That would be obviously through the water department. Um, and then the next one, also addressing drought, require use of water sensors for lawn sprinkler systems, and considering, consider developing a bylaw requiring a permit Okay, these last two, medium and one low priority, collaborate with Holyoke Waterworks to conduct tabletop exercises for the Thai Carmody Dam if there were to be a breach. Ensure that emergency notification system is updated and feasible. And we also had them come, representative come to the commit, one of our committee meetings. But uh, I don't think this has been done, unless it was in the past, having tabletop exercises.
If it's been done, it was done quite a while ago, there hasn't been a recent one that I'm aware of, yeah.
Okay. Implement ongoing tree maintenance, ensure regular communication with every source about priority areas for mitigating power outages. Um, and the last one is low priority, but we did have to have a, an action addressing earthquakes, which is to evaluate critical facilities for earthquake resistance, use a FEMA evaluation tool, which I do have that I can give the town, and seismic rehabilitation if necessary. So that was it for the new, for all of the actions, and that's also it for my presentation. So it's a public comment, period, or anybody to ask questions, comments about hazards, the plan.
And can people still write in to you with questions, or?
Uh, yeah, my email is here.
Just because we've got people listening on, on our TV station here that are not here tonight, but maybe if they have some questions. And the full plan, for everybody who is listening, the full plan as it exists right now is on the town website under the government category, and if you look down under reports and plans, the existing hazard mitigation plan is there, so.
Right, the draft plan.
Well, the old one is there, and then your draft plan.
Oh, sorry about that.
Draft plan is there, too, I believe.
Yeah.
All right. So people could contact Mimi, mkaplan@pvp.org, if you had.
Yep.
Few questions.
Yep, M Kaplan.
Now, when, what is your deadline for getting this to MEMA, do you think?
There, there is not an immediate deadline, but I would like to do it. Um, I mean, definitely by the end of September, preferably sooner. I would say, I would say like September 15th would be a good deadline to get feedback.
And how long do they usually take to review it before?
Uh, I mean, probably the shortest has ever been maybe a month, usually it's more like two to three months.
And then it still has to go to the federal?
Then it has to go to FEMA.
Yeah.
It can be a long process for them to review it. Be nice if they could do it quicker.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have questions? Anybody, yeah, Bruce? Sure, come on in. Yeah, just introduce yourself and if you've got a question.
Hi, Bruce Bowman, 202 Palmer Way Meadow Road. I want to thank the committee for all the hard work that they've put in on this. Two areas of comment, the, the Thai Carmody reservoir that is water supply for Holyoke. I understand that's because of the size of the, the dam, that the state mandates inspections every two years. I just wondered whether the reports from those inspections go to the landowner or the town, or both? So I would encourage the, you know, I don't know what the process is for the town to be sure that they're getting reports every two years of that inspection. The other thing relates to fire preparedness in light of climate change, and the, the action plan that we have, we have a tanker pumper truck that is dysfunctional and in drought scenarios and greater wildfire risk. I think the town is at risk by not having a functional tanker pumper truck, and I would like to see some mechanism to include that into an action plan, at least indicating that it is a, a medium or a high priority item, so that if in the future funding is available from the government, either state or federal, then it's recognized, the town sees the need for this, just like we need a generator for the school, we need a tanker pumper truck, and something to move forward to get the process done so that we could get one. I know there are lots of things the town needs, but um, we're in a drought scenario, and anyway, those are my concerns, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Bruce. I think just to, just to answer briefly, the, the tanker truck has been the subject of a grant application with Chief Vesoli to the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, so we should be hearing soon. We had tried it last year and were not successful. So, but, but to, but to mention it as a, as a, as an action item to actually acquire the tanker truck, yeah, tanker pumper.
We need to have a capital approval if you have our.
Yeah, sure. And, you know, the price tag of those was, I believe, chief, it was around six or $700,000 for the truck. I mean, it's, it's six or $700,000, I think, yeah, it was something crazy. So we're, we're waiting to see, I know that, when I talked to the chief, we hadn't, we hadn't had a result yet on the announcement of any federal grants, but hopefully that one is still in play.
And yet.
But.
It's an action item, where we've taken action, and we came up short once, and it would be really good to be able to cite the plan.
Right.
In support of perhaps a third grant application.
So, just, do you want to say how?
I think to add it specifically as a, as an action.
Well, we clearly are taking action in that direction, having identified the need.
Yeah, I, I would say, I think one of the other thoughts was to strike the tier-two, since there's no tier-twos within the town, that basically you're swiping, swapping that out. And the first grant that we applied for, for the fire department was from the feds, so if we put it in FEMA, and FEMA approves it, it's another supporting document next year when the federal money comes out.
Exactly, yeah. If we can have this in our action items, then when it gets to the fed level, when they look at grant applications, they know that we're serious about doing something.
Process, have applied.
Yeah, okay, that would be good.
The fire chief has been including that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, I think, yeah, just lack of clarity in terms of where there might be any tier-two sites. I'm not, nothing's coming to my brain at the moment, and I don't remember what we would have discussed in our meetings.
I can guess, but I'm not going to.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
And some I suspect have been resolved.
Some may have been resolved, so, you know, these might have been carried over.
Yeah, and maybe carried over from like two previous plans.
Yeah.
So it may have been an issue back in 2010.
Right, yeah, okay. Is there anything else from your end, Mimi, that needs to, I'll have you back up at the mic so you can get the, our recording is kind of low here. Anything else that you need from us? I mean, any other questions before the 15th, is what I'm hearing?
Yes, I would say feedback on the plan before September 15th would be ideal.
Okay, all right.
I'll make those changes that we talked about, but I will also talk to the committee about that other wildfire, planning-related.
Okay.
Item.
Any detail, any reference, any context for the fire plan, yeah?
Okay, yeah.
And it might just be inserting the word research.
Yeah. It may be just a couple of wording changes.
To begin the research process.
Research, investigate, you know, anything like that.
Exactly. Rather than actually implement something, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd be interested in exploring, actually doing it, so. If we're done with that, may I ask Representative from Pioneer Valley Planning Council to carry your request back to your colleagues?
Um, yeah.
Yes, separate issue for?
Separated issue, previously raised with Ken Kumia, who's the environmental chief planner, and this is in response to what I understand is standing offer to all communities that participate in the MPO to have one or two traffic counts done annually. In light of a recent fatality in front of a property that we're very actively planning for, I would reiterate my request that can boost this up on the priority list. I have not discussed it with our highway superintendent, but I think he would be.
Well, the police chief, too, yeah.
Yeah, so it came up in different circumstances, but if we get two freebies a year, we certainly have need to develop baseline at 117 to 125 College Highway.
Okay, so their request is just.
That's entirely out of channels, I apologize, but it's really important because we have had a number of serious car crashes and a very recent fatality.
Do you want me to relay that address, or would you just say no?
Yes.
What was the address again?
117 dash 125 College Highway. Ken knows it as perhaps Zero College Highway, which is not very helpful.
Okay.
And yes, of course, coordinate with our highway superintendent and our police chief, but there was no, there was no contest. This is the place to do it and the time to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
I will do that.
And follow up with me if that doesn't make sense.
Well, I, I, okay, so I'm not opposed to this, but I'm, I'm, I object to the process.
Okay.
Only in that, I have no problem doing this formally, but I think as a board, we should vote to do it, which I would support, but instead of one member acting through the chair to send a directive to utilize resources, which I'm fully in favor of, I'd rather you make that as a motion under other business.
I think that's very helpful.
And then it has weight, and the town administrator could follow up on it, right?
Yeah, and especially with that being a state highway, too, I'm not sure how that, how that fits in with.
Yeah, I, I just, I think we should speak as a voice.
We've had, we've had traffic counts and traffic surveys on our other side roads, I know, but I don't know lately on one on College Highway, I'm not sure of that.
Okay.
Okay.
This definitely falls out of my purview. I mean, obviously, it's our transportation division, even if the request is going to Ken.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, good. Thank you, Mimi.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And we'll get you any further thoughts and comments within the next 10 days, thereabouts, and let you do your thing with MEMA and FEMA.
Okay.
Hopefully, they can put their stamps of approval on it, and then that allows us to apply for grants, because a lot of this does require, any mitigation kinds of things obviously require money to do that, and that's where the MEMAs and the FEMA's exist primarily to do that kind of work with communities, so.
Yes.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next up, we have a couple of appointments, yeah.
Madam Chair, without objection, without objection, I'd like to take up the first two bullet points under appointments and resignation and pass on the third, as it will come up later.
Right.
And I move that we accept the resignation of Thomas Seer as plumbing and gas inspector effective August 18th, 2025, and I believe his note indicates he's going into retirement. And I move that we accept the resignation of Aaron Menard from Hampshire Regional High School School Committee effective August 18th, 2025, and the reason stated is personal reasons.
Second.
Okay, motions made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, those two motions pass, resignations are accepted. All right, um, reports, Scott, town administrator report, please.
So I was out on a family matter most last week, however, I do want to just recognize Brett and the water commission for handling the Glendale pump issue. Handled it very well, I think most people didn't even experience any differences.
Yeah, maybe explain, explain a little bit what happened, yeah.
So unfortunately, over, you know, our main well to the Aquifer is over on Glendale Road, it's that little house that you see right off of the highway, right off of College Highway. There was, I won't go into the technical details because I, I have nothing, I have no idea about the technical details about what it takes to run a townwide pump, but we were able to get some of the backup water from East Hampton, and this is actually, you know, in relation to hazard mitigation plan, it's important to plan ahead for these types of things, water, electricity, or basic utilities. So I think the water department has it very well covered.
Is our water back online? Is that pump back online, or is that still?
Um, I didn't get an update yet from Brett. Stephen, do you know?
That's a good question. I'm not clear about that.
Thought it was going to take a, take a bit of time to, to get things done, but in the meantime, they were.
I could expand briefly on that. The failure of the pump triggered the occasion of reconditioning the well, which was previously identified as need and funded.
Okay.
And so when they pulled the pump, which had failed for, we don't know what reasons, that triggered, you know, arrival of the crew that could do this reconditioning of the well, which will increase our physical yield from the well.
Okay.
But the status of our pump, I can't tell you. The status of our reciprocal relationship with East Hampton is good, and I'm thrilled to hear that it was seamless for the customers.
Mm-hmm, okay, good, next, anything else?
That's about it.
That's about it.
Not, not for public. Yeah.
Right.
You need negotiations and stuff like that, but.
Yeah, right. And we've still got the ADA evaluation ongoing, right? And various other things that are happening as well, so, okay. How about any select board reports? Anybody have any meetings this last week or two?
I tell you, we're meeting quite regularly at the end and the beginning of the month, so nothing here.
Okay. John, anything with?
No, I don't have any.
Yeah, and I don't think I do either. We've got a couple of meetings coming up with master plan coming up and a bylaws meeting, but nothing, nothing imminent, and we're waiting on grant, grant results. We've had three or four applications that have been put in over the last several months, and we're just waiting on, on action from the various programs to know whether we've received them or not, and this will be certainly by the end of this month, they should be. We should be notified on many of them, one would hope. So we'll take it, take it from there when we do. All right, well, let's get into the new business then and talk about special town meeting. I believe we have to actually open the special town meeting warrant, so do we need a vote to do that, I assume, to do that, so I'll take the motion?
Move to open the warrant? Second.
Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. So Scott, why don't you lead us through what we're trying to do here?
Okay, so for the articles, I've asked everyone to get everything in by last week, at least any of the drafts. We do have, bear with me, 11 articles scheduled for the special town meeting, the first being the borrowing authorization for the senior center. This is language that's provided to us for bond council that we have to legally use. The amount that I came up with was $11,970,000. That is not the total cost of the project. The, the total cost of the project will be about $14,170,000. That's a, once we take out about $2.2 million from the Red Parsons estate, that would leave the town borrowing, you know, a little bit under $12 million. One thing I just want to point out is the Red Parsons estate has about $2.46 million in it. We'll probably need to have some cash available leading up to the year, two years of construction, so leave us about a quarter million dollars in case there is a need for any funds. If there isn't any need for those funds, then those funds can just be transferred into the, the construction costs, and we would just simply borrow less. But since we don't have a lot of town budgets with flexibility, so if you had to do like a land survey or land maintenance or anything like that, we simply just don't have that in our regular operating budgets.
And I think most of the land issues were, were taken care of already. We've already had the, the survey and the, the land acquisition has already been done.
Right, it's like survey is locating the actual site.
Right, the actual site, okay.
Yeah.
And I think, so what you're saying, the, the amount from the Red Parsons estate, if I'm hearing you right, would go toward the architectural and OPM costs?
Mm-hmm.
So that would be the startup phase kind of thing?
Right, so we have about the A and E in architectural and engineering, and then soft costs are about $3.27 million. Half of that is about architectural and engineering. The other costs, the other part of the soft costs, like permitting, you know, insurance, site preparation, furnitures and fixtures, that'll all come up later.
But it's all part of the total package here? I mean, this is our total, total amount that we're looking at right now to be borrowed?
Total out the door price.
But the amount to be borrowed, it should not be any more than that.
Mm-hmm.
And when would you think that this would hit anybody's tax bill?
Uh, we probably wouldn't borrow this for at least a year to a year and a half. We probably wouldn't borrow this for at least a year to a year and a half. You know, it's gonna be, if it passes town meeting, special town meeting in September, in a couple of weeks, and then if it's approved by the voters in November, it's gonna take a couple of months just to do, you know, get the OPM on board. The OPM's gonna take a few months to get the architect and engineering on board, and it could take at least a year and a half, two years before we actually start seeing impact to the taxes.
And again, I think just for folks that are listening, the way I'm understanding this, and again, correct me, but the OPM and the architect really are the ones that then have to take this feasibility study that currently exists, which people are aware of, and take that and make it more real. We've got a conceptual plan, but it's not right down to the brass tacks of what it's really gonna look like. So all these, you know, whatever, fine tuning, I guess I would say, of the plan, is what the OPM and the architect have to do for us.
And then also, if this is approved, then I would recommend the Select Board appointing a senior senior building committee to handle like the daily activities, so work with the OPM. It'd be a committee that would decide on the paint color, or, you know, furnishings, fixtures, things like that, to keep, also to approve and make sure the budget stays within budget. So generally, you know, most major municipal projects will have a committee like that that works with the OPM. They approve the warrants, they approve the spending. If there is a decision to be made, you know, maybe something goes a little bit more money than expected, and something's a little bit less, do we transfer money from the different line items to kind of cover that changes? So really, it would be a committee that works, you know, almost on a weekly basis with the OPM to approve everything, make sure that the project is on target and on budget.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, so just on that line, on that last note there, I think that's a perfect use of the Finance Committee. But then the other comments here, I understand that this is, you can't wordsmith this at all, so that's fine, but what you can wordsmith is the supporting documents that go in, and it's gotta be crystal clear that we're not starting at 11.9, you're starting at whatever X is, minus the bequest that came in. And I understand the holdback of a quarter of a million dollars, but it should also be worded, because when, you don't borrow the 11.9 million on day one.
Right.
It's gonna be borrowed over probably a two-year period, so it'll be phased in. And then you can, and you actually don't have to borrow until five years after the project, you know, and then when it's complete. So that extra 250, if not spent, should go to reduce the final borrowing.
Correct.
And all that needs to be verbalized and spelled out, not just, we're gonna, because if I hear, oh, we're gonna hold back 250, well, then if five years from now, when the project's done, three years, when the project's done, no one's gonna remember that.
Right.
And where'd that 250 go, or where's it gonna go? It's better just to, if this has any hope of actually passing.
Well, I think.
It's gotta be crystal clear, and it almost needs a full-page summary.
Yeah, I think your comment about, you know, in terms of the borrowing itself, I think that has been confusing. I mean, we haven't had a major municipal project underway here since the library, so that's been 25, almost 30 years. So a lot of people have not been involved in any kind of municipal construction project. So just understanding how the borrowing goes, I mean, when we had the East Street Bridge, we had at least a couple of years before we actually.
Yeah.
Went out to borrow for that. So, I mean, it's not like, I mean, it will hit a tax bill, there's no doubt about that, but it's not gonna hit it for a couple of years by the time we get going. But I think that phasing notion of how you go about borrowing would be helpful to explain in more detail to people offhand.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, so this includes all the soft costs as well, though, it's not just construction costs?
Right, exactly.
So more to the soft costs.
Sorry?
I meant, to the soft costs. I imagine there's not a draft RFP for these services yet.
Not yet, we've gotta get.
However.
That's the thing, we've gotta get it going.
Right. I mean, what I'm about to say is that the scope matters, and I would like to make a public statement that we need to explicitly include value engineering and multi-functionality in this next stage of planning with our agent and the architect. Because I read the papers, or read the bits and bytes, and I'm really disturbed that we need, it's incumbent on us to advance the conversation about this. We've got years and years of committee work that have done exactly this. Look at alternatives, look at, you know, the most feasible options, but we're at a point where we need to put all those cards on the table again as well.
Well, and this is all related to the feasibility study that's been done, so now, like I'm saying, you're gonna go to that next phase with an OPM and an architect that takes that conceptual planning process and feasibility study into real actuality, and that's, that's the step where we can't move forward unless we get the town approval to move forward, otherwise, we're just, we're stuck.
And we need to be clear what we're asking the town to support.
Correct, yep, exactly, yep, absolutely. Okay, go ahead, Scott, sorry, didn't mean to take up all your time, go ahead.
So that's the.
But I think that's gotta be clear, right? We all agree, we've gotta be very clear and have as much explanation and handouts, whatever we need to make that very clear to all the voters, yeah.
So the next article would be a transfer for health insurance. As you know, we were hit with an 18% increase on July 1, and then we were just hit with a 20% mid-year increase effective on October 1. Right now, this is basically Operation Blood From a Stone. There's not a lot of money that's, that we're available in this year's budget without looking at potential personnel, you know, reductions or changes, which I'm trying to avoid. So it's really using a lot of money that's been sitting around, that's been available. Talk a little bit more in depth about it in the September 9 meeting with the Finance Committee. But this would essentially get us to our annual town meeting. Hopefully, we can reevaluate what our costs are gonna be, and we'll probably need a little bit more transfer at the end of annual town meeting to cover the rest of the two months at the year. We do anticipate potentially in, because this does affect Hampshire Regional as well, so there's gonna be that issue that's gonna be coming up. We're also gonna be looking at a pretty significant increase to our Medex Plan, which is our Medicare Supplemental Plan, which we won't come into effect until January 1.
So, Scott, this 318 is the town's portion of the municipal side, including Norris, the elementary school.
Yes.
But excluding Hampshire Regional, of which we're 52 to 54%, and our portion of the Hampshire Regional right now is anticipated to be a half a million dollars on top of this 318. So this 318's us, and then it's another half a million to Hampshire Regional, whether or not they.
I thought it was gonna be closer to 250 for the Hampshire Regional? I think it was 500,000 for the total.
So the two, all right, so 250 plus the 318.
Yeah, I think it was five altogether, maybe?
And the 318 is just to get to annual town meeting?
No, I understand this.
It's gonna be more.
But this is, but this is gonna, this is going to come up, because you're talking about a little over a half a million dollars.
For health.
That we got notified 45 days after our budget passed. That means that these trustees and overseers up there knew, I don't know what they knew or didn't know, but in May, when they gave us the initial 20%, what did they not see that 45 days later, they haven't had an emergency meeting and pushed through another 20% increase to towns and school systems that unlike the state of Massachusetts, cannot just go into a rainy day fund? Unlike the GIC, the legislators didn't bail them out with hundreds of millions of dollars. And now we have to figure out where to do this, and look at the line items that are being cut. I mean, the Police Department, the truck, that's $8,400 that did not get spent on that last truck that we have?
That's from the Annual Town Meeting 23, I'm not quite sure, but this is all money that's available in the capital fund right now?
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, so all these other things are being put aside, now, I mean, some of them is just gonna be closed out, but the, I don't understand how we're pulling $50,000 out of the ambulance fees when that money is restricted to support the ambulance service. Now, maybe the fire chief's pay gets a portion out of that, but it's not $50,000 to support that, I'm not sure that legally we can pull that money from there. And there was another one in there, too, the ambulance fund, that money is designed, is specified and set aside specifically to purchase an ambulance, how can we pull $1,200 out of there? And it's all, it's fine, $1,200, we'll figure it out in the $50,000, but we're being, because of what that group did, that consortium did, we have to come up with a half a million dollars on a budget that, again, 45 days before this notice, we already failed an override that already cut a half a million dollars to 600,000 from Norris.
Right.
But let's just pay the bill, and that's not directed at you, Scott.
Yeah.
No, we are, we are taking pretty significant steps to evaluate our health insurance, and we've had the executive sessions and will continue to do so. I definitely would double down on John's frustrations with the process that just happened, but unfortunately, this is one of the situations where it did just happen 45 days ago into our budget, and the bills are due October 1, and it would be, it would take a miracle to do any changes at this point.
And there has been a huge public outcry from all the communities, yet our Attorney General does nothing, our Commissioner of Insurance has done nothing, or at least publicly, neither one of them, the two bodies that have oversight over this organization, nobody has lost their job, there's been no investigation, at least that the public is aware of.
Yeah.
And a half a million dollars to us, and there's, what, 80?
It's huge.
82 members, or 63 members in that group?
Yeah, it's huge. So this covers, this would cover the October increase that we're being taxed with right now, except for Hampshire Regional?
Yes, and it should get us to annual town meeting. There is gonna be a special open enrollment for people on the PPO plan, hopefully that helps a little bit. So, you know, I do expect another adjustment at annual town meeting to get through the rest of the year. Hopefully, you know, people might look at other alternatives if they have a spouse that might be on the calendar year, and this is too expensive, they might look at other options, so I'm hoping to have a reduction.
So just for clarity, on some of these that are listed as ATM or STM, so these were capital funds that had been approved, and am I correct in assuming the projects happened, and these are the, these are remaining balances?
Yeah, the, or like the library lighting didn't actually happen, it was actually funded through a grant instead.
They got a grant instead.
But in order to take it from the capital stabilization, it has to be a town meeting vote.
Right, okay. But back to John's point about taking ambulance fees, is that, are we pretty sure, is that 50,000, that we can do that?
Yeah, that goes into the general fund.
Okay.
No, ambulance fees? Are you talking about the ambulance fees stabilization account?
No, that's a separate account that we almost zeroed out last budget cycle to help fund Norris. It was a hundred and something thousand, there's just a little over a thousand left in it.
So, we've collected more than $50,718.86 above and beyond the cost to support and run that ambulance, and that, and it's been declared surplus?
No, the ambulance runs mostly out of deficit.
Right, so we're just, we're gonna borrow 50,000 to pay this bill, but we're just saying, okay, Mr. and Mrs. Voter, we're gonna come back to you, because the deficit's gonna be even greater for that ambulance fund, and.
Well, the problem is where we get the 50,000 to cover what we have to cover for the October bill? I mean, that 50,000 is still part of that 318,000, right? And that was the only place that you found that you could take that amount of money?
Yeah, I mean, we did work, we are working with some other sources like the Water Department, there's about $60,000 grant that the town funded that we're looking to work with Water Commission as a recruit, but that's gonna take a couple of weeks, and it's not gonna be in time for special town meeting. So we are looking at pretty much anywhere that has available money that we can take from, we're looking at doing it without affecting personnel.
Right.
And this is all money that, I mean, we could've used for capital expenditures. I mean, there's almost close to probably about $60,000, $70,000 that we could've bought a new police cruiser with, we could've put towards an ambulance fund, we could've did more Norris school improvements, you know, funding another, you know, public safety study potentially, things like that, and I mean, it's gotta go towards health insurance, no?
Yeah.
And I don't want to dip into operating stabilization, because I mean, we're already taking 150,000, we're only, we're just barely over a million dollars, which is only halfway where we need to be to begin with, and we're not looking at a lot of free cash this year, mostly because, you know, we have the Norris obligation of $150,000 that we have to pay out. Our capital stabilization fund is woefully underfunded, so if we keep those percentages, I mean, we won't have much capital to look at anyways. So there might be a miracle with free cash, but, I mean, I'm not expecting a lot because of the budget transfers last fiscal year.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess my last comment is, you know, I mean, this is ridiculous to start with, but the fact is, minus that 150 that you're pulling from operating, that means that we had $168,000 that was overcommitted in that budget, and available, that could've reduced the $600,000 impact to Norris, and we didn't take these actions here to free the money up then.
I'm not following you, John, sorry.
Except for the first line, right? Because we know the money that was in there in the operation. All of that, all those other line items, we're being told that is available cash that can be spent to cover that 318, so 318 minus the 150 gives you $168,922.96 that could've been reallocated already to Norris to minimize the $600,000 or the 18% budget cut in the layoffs and the reduction in staff.
My concern would.
But I'm just, but until it came to this catastrophe, or natural disaster coming down the pike.
Yeah.
We, you know, we didn't spend the time to do this exercise before, but now we don't want employees to lose their insurance, so we have to find the money.
Well, my concern is, especially with Norris, a lot of its personnel costs, this is a lot of one-time funds that we're using for ongoing costs, and I don't even think this is the right way to really look at it, because this is, again, you know, this is Blood From a Stone, these are all just funds that we have available that are one-time sources that we're using to balance ongoing expenses, which is a difficult way to go, especially in the future.
Yeah, it's not a sustainable approach, really.
I agree, it's not sustainable, but we could've taken the hit in two steps instead of one year.
Yeah, well, we didn't know this one was coming down the pike, too, either, but, yeah, okay. Moving on, next one?
The third one is the Personal Policy and Procedures Board update.
I'm all in favor of this one, by the way.
So this is a two-step process, the first one is to repeal the PQB bylaw, and then the next article is to reinsert the Select Board as the authorized representative of the Personal Rules, Regulations and Procedures. This comes just from Town Council.
And currently, that's a five-person volunteer committee, of which I'm one by virtue of sitting on this board.
And one from Finance as well.
Right, and we barely get three people. Well, we still have two vacancies, and it's just, it's an inefficient, ineffective way to run the way we are right now.
The next one is to continue the funding of the Conservation Agent. By September, I was looking to have this position unfunded, and we would've been hiring a land use coordinator, but with everything with the health insurance, it's probably best to postpone it at least a little while longer until we can fill this one and make sure that we're on stable ground. It would be a full-time position, so not only would it be a salary, but also potentially benefits.
So the land use planner, though, is gonna combine both planning functions as well as conservation into one entity?
Right, right.
Because right now, we have a part-time conservation agent and no planning agent, per se.
Right, exactly. And then the next one, again, was the transfer funds for the Health Agent. We hired Claudia after the budget cycle was already done, looking at the salary and her experience, we wanted to make sure that we're able to provide an adequate salary that's reflective of her experience and qualifications, and this will be just a transfer from that land use planner to the Health Agent line item.
And this number is just to meet the obligation that, when we hired her, right? It's not a increase in pay from when she started?
Correct.
So this gets us through the fiscal year, covering salaries?
Mm-hmm. The appointment of the Finance Committee, I am waiting for pending language from the Town Council to present to the FinCom, but this was, we talked about it last budget cycle, about potentially having the Town Moderator appoint the FinCom members from elected into appointed.
And that's been done in many other towns, we're one of the few towns that still elects the Finance Committee?
Mm-hmm, that's correct. Mark, I don't know if you wanna maybe speak on the next couple of ones, because you're the expert on them, but the next three are coming from Open Space.
Mark Cassis, Foma Road, I'm speaking as Open Space Chair, I'm also one CPC. We've got an agreement from the Chansery family that they would sell 40 acres of land that's up at the end of Walcott Road for $50,000 to the town for conservation purposes. We've gotten an agreement from Kestrel Land Trust that they will put up all the money for that. for that and survey funds that may ultimately mean there's a small amount of legal cost for the final closing for the town, but we, and this is next to fifty acres of existing conservation property up there, so this is, would be just, I think it would require a two-thirds vote for acquisition of property, but there's no significant expense for the town for this and builds on existing conservation land.
So the assumption is that the total price is fifty thousand dollars, probably funded by Kestrel, but if Kestrel does not come through, then this would come out of CPC, is that what I'm understanding?
No, the way this is worded is only as we get, receive fifty thousand dollars from Kestrel Land Trust or similar agency. So there's no, no CPC in this, no conservation restriction, the, this would be protected under Chapter ninety-seven.
But the total price is still a fifty thousand, not a hundred thousand?
No, it's fifty.
But it may be.
It's, the total is fifty thousand dollars and if Kestrel for some reason doesn't come up with it, we are not buying the property at this point if we, if we...
Does the fifty, the fifty thousand would go to seller?
Exactly.
There would, there may potentially be an additional legal cost?
There would, the legal cost of closing for the town, that is the, as far as I know, you know, the survey work and the paying the owners would be covered by Kestrel, whatever legal fees of actually the town's signing papers would, there would be an expense to the town.
Any, any idea? Are we talking over a thousand?
When we, when they gave, when they gave me a figure for the other property, it was five hundred dollars, I think, it's a reason, pretty reasonable.
Yeah, I guess what was confusing me was the way, just the sum of fifty thousand shall not be expended unless the town has received fifty thousand toward the purchase, so...
So I think that...
The way I read it, I was combining the two.
Again, how, how the, whether the legal, our legal counsel feels like it needs to be worded, I have to leave to them, but the, the idea is that it would not be purchased unless we actually had the money in hand from our promise of reimbursement from Kestrel. And it may be that there's no actually town expenditures, it may be just Kestrel sends a check to the family.
So this would be another one, like in the summary, the first sentence says, we can't change this wording because the legal counsel says so, but if we, if we don't receive a gift of fifty thousand from a counselor, we're not buying it from fifty thousand.
Yeah, I think that needs to be clear because that, I read that as a hundred thousand dollar property, so that's what I was confused about.
This authorizes the Select Board to act on the purchase, so it doesn't require the purchase to go through.
Yeah, okay. And should that one say like the next one does, contingent on receiving the grant up in the title?
There is no grant on this one, this is just a gift from Kestrel, Kestrel's going to figure out where to...
I see, from their sources.
Get, get money from their sources.
Okay, got it, all right.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah.
So the next two are Floric Property, which is twenty-seven acres next to Wolf Hill, it's next to Alder Pond. This is, part of this was precipitated when they took property out of sixty-one A that was in front of the board earlier. They, in the discussion, said they'd be willing to sell some of the rest of the property to the town for conservation purposes, so we were able to get a land grant in to cover sixty-six percent of the four hundred and twenty, six thousand, nine hundred dollars. And we'll hear about that mid-September by according to what the state person told me, but it's very close to the town vote, so this authorizes the use of the thirty-four percent of CPA funding, accepting the land grant and acquisition of the property. This does include most of the legal costs and the actual purchase price for the family is four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The approximately eleven thousand and something is for surveying, baseline study, some other title search, things like that.
And the, and the current reserves of the CPA fund are sufficient to cover this?
Easily, yep. Good question. The second one, next article, I don't know if you switched over, is we wanted to have a contingency in case we didn't get the land grant and we think it's still a valuable property and the Open Space Committee and the Conservation Commission agreed that we should, and then it went to the CPA, that we should fully fund it through CPA funding if we do not get the land grant.
Same question.
Yep, adequate funding, yes, there is adequate funding, there's eight hundred thousand dollars in, for, available.
So if we know by the town meeting, special town meeting, whether we've got the land grant...
One of these can disappear.
We might just pass over number ten.
Yeah, one of these two can be, assume, they've been slow on telling us these grants, so we, so the hope is that we will know and won't have to vote on the second one.
Right, okay. Okay, all right, thanks, yeah.
Lot of work going into this. Thank you. And just the final one is unpaid bills from the previous fiscal year.
Okay, so that's all we have, that's all we're expecting for warrant articles, nothing else coming our way that we know of?
No, I've asked about, for the last month, everyone to get them in on time, so that's what we've received so far. I've received one or two minor ones that we can probably put off until Annual Town Meeting.
Okay. All right. So we're not, we're not waiting, and we're not going to vote on these tonight, we don't need to vote on them tonight.
I would, I would recommend just calling a quick five-minute meeting on next Tuesday just to officially close out the warrant and get, but, you know, vote on these, so...
And we have all the language in place, because I think that's what we need to have, yeah? Okay, anybody have any questions about what's on the warrant at this point?
No.
And we're still aiming at September thirtieth at seven PM, I believe. And just to answer Robert's question before, we had voted at special town, sorry, Annual Town Meeting in May about changing the dates of our meetings, whether annual or special. Special Town Meeting can be any day of the week if I'm correct, but we had not heard until, I think it just came in, I saw something flash up from Lucy, I think we just got the word from the Attorney General just now about all the bylaws that we put through in May at the Annual Town Meeting, because we cannot act and implement the bylaws that were put forth at the Annual Town Meeting until we get the Attorney General's sign-off. So that would have allowed maybe for a Saturday meeting, but we've already got this pretty much set for the, the Tuesday evening.
Also, with process, just for next Tuesday, I, I do have this as part of the agenda to discuss with the FinCom, so hopefully get their support on the financial.
Right, on the financial parts of it, right. So at this point in time, we'll, we'll stick with the, the Tuesday evening Special Town Meeting like people are used to, but most likely our May one would be a Saturday going forward, okay? So we, we had thought we would have the annual, the Attorney General's approval on bylaws before now and obviously they've been very slow at getting them to us. Okay, I think that takes it for the Special Town Warrant.
Yep.
If nothing else, we'll move on to the next topic and that is the Group Insurance Commission discussion. And this ties in with our earlier discussion about our insurance costs with the Hampshire County, what are they, Hampshire County Entire Retirement Insurance Trust, whatever they're called, HGIT. This one is GIC, which is one that is, has written to us and they've written to many different towns, since we know that we're all in the same boat of having to look at these crazy insurance costs that are just being, that are just being imposed. So they are reaching out to us saying, you know, we'd be willing to talk to you about what's happening with your insurance and we would just need to let them know that we might be interested in having them come in later in the month or in October to talk to us about an alternative option for our insurance coverage. We obviously would have to, according to this letter, we would have to join a new plan by December if we were to switch, but we are stuck with the current insurance, my understanding, right through the, through the next, through the fiscal year, basically. So even if we opted for a different change of insurance carrier, nothing will still take effect until July first, right? Okay, so maybe talk a little bit about GIC between Scott, John, or both of you?
Chris, were your comments specifically related just to the GIC?
GIC, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so this is the GIC, yeah, right, GIC, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the good thing with this one is the state bails this one out.
Uh-huh, sorry.
The state bails out the GIC, which they just did.
Mm-hmm.
Three hundred and eighty million dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Well, our legislators, that's where their insurance is.
So they have, they basically, according to this letter, right, so they have a membership of nine hundred and eighteen public agencies and fifty-five municipal partners, so they cover quite a, quite a portfolio apparently, but...
They do.
There is some, I mean, with the cover, I was a member of the GIC and, and obviously I'm a member now.
Sure.
You know, I, I think there, there are a lot of different plan options to make it worthwhile for the town of Southampton. We'd probably encourage people to look at the Health New England Plan, which is the, the most affordable, but they do offer other plans that have a broader network. But for most of our employees, I think Worcester West is what H and E covers. One thing, just to let you know, so the December first is the deadline for notification of the GIC that we'd like to join, but there is a process under Section nineteen where we have to engage with our unions about potentially entering it into it. It's about a thirty-day process, so October, November, early October, we would have to send a, a letter notifying them of our intent to do that. There's also, our retirees get a percentage of the say on entering it. Hopefully we could come to an agreement and if not, then it could go before an independent board that would review the cost savings and allow the town to move into it.
And, and negotiations would be over the, what do we do with the cost savings? How much do, do the union members get and how much does the town get to recognize? And you have to give notice by December first to go in on, to have the open enrollment in June to take effect on the fiscal year.
Right.
And Health New England is in there. But a parallel path that is being explored additionally is to go stand alone with Health New England, directly with them, and that... Is there anything in writing that we, that we can't give note, thirty-day notice to exit our existing plan if we have a independent, fully funded through Health New England?
Well, we have to provide thirty days, I think it's ninety days notice, I have to double-check the, the agreement, it's either thirty or ninety days. So once we provide that, we would just have to look at our run-out costs, there's about twenty-six thousand dollars in our fund for that, but I'm expecting, given, given the way things have been trending, it's going to be a little bit more than twenty-six thousand dollars for those run-out costs.
So just don't, don't get confused with, Health New England, there's, right now we're pursuing two parallel paths. The one through the GIC, which is better and is more suited for this area, and then just forget the GIC, forget H-I-G-T, whatever it is, and just go stand alone.
Yeah, so we got two other options that we're employing, that we're investigating or we would have.
Right.
If we invite these guys in to talk to us, we'd have two options to explore in addition to, I mean, our current situation.
Hopefully, that, that other option will be, we're aiming to have the reports somewhat ninety percent finalized by September eighth so that you have it in time for the Finance Meeting, or the Joint Meeting to discuss.
Good, okay. Well, what about, what do we think about, you know, at least hedging our bets and also inviting somebody from GIC to come in and talk to us at some point at a future meeting? I mean, so we have things to compare? Is that a good idea?
I don't need any additional information on the GIC. But you guys feel free.
We might, I do.
I, I do think if, I think communication will be key, that I think if we're, I'm, I'm not opposed to listening to somebody from the GIC, but I also think part of the report that we're helping Scott generate is going to have some talking points on that and pros and cons and here's all, you might want to wait for those recommendations to act upon.
Yeah, so if we have that fairly soon, then we might...
But if you do, yeah, and again, Stephen knows about the Joint Meeting and so I told him I want the report ahead of time for that so you guys can look at it.
Okay, all right.
But the, and then I'll probably even, well, we'll see how it goes, maybe we'll make him available, because I won't be here and he can address the questions that come up, but if we're going to invite the GIC in, we, we need simultaneously or in advance let the unions know.
Yeah.
Because I suspect...
Yeah.
There's going to be a huge pushback.
Right, yeah, no, I'm sure.
So...
So we can, we, we at least know that they've, they've reached out to us to want to talk to us, so I don't think we need to decide that tonight, but I, I think we ought to keep that on the table as, as an option, but let's get through whatever is being looked at as the first alternative and then, you know, at least, you know, know what we've got for choices, because I think it will mean some different, different situations for different people on personnel, both the union and non-union, I mean, you know, in terms of deductibles and all that kind of stuff, I'm sure would be very different between all the plans that we're talking about.
Either way, we're going to have to talk to the unions, whether it is going, you know, fully insured plan or go joining the GIC, it's a requirement that we have to bargain over it.
Right, okay. But these guys need a definitive answer by December if we would...
Well, it's every six, every six months.
Oh, is it?
So if you miss that window, it opens again in six months.
I see, okay.
But then we're out of the cycle of our budget.
Right, yeah, exactly, okay. All right, so we at least know that there's another potential option out there as well. Good. All right, next thing up, I think, Open Space and Recreation Plan, discussion and vote. So I think we'll have Mark come back up again. I think this was another mini-update in a way.
Actually, it's a vote.
So...
Yes, it's a vote.
Do you want a motion before he...
Mark Cassis, nineteen Flora Road, Chair of Open Space Committee. I took over chair not that long ago. I wrote to, actually, Mimi Kaplan to find out when we needed to start the process for the next Open Space Plan to make sure that we were on target. And she notified me by email that if we update the action plan and goals by September thirtieth, we can extend our current plan, which ends in twenty-twenty-eight to twenty-thirty-one, and there's no cost to the town to do that except our work. So we got working on that but did not have that much time. I have put, I sent out old goals and plans to multiple people, I will go over the list of who that is, and then also a rewritten set of action plans and goals and put together an Open Space and Recreation Plan update running from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty-one that includes, this is with the help of a lot of other people, what we've accomplished between twenty-one and twenty-five. In reality, our overall goals have not changed at all in that time, but the specific action plans and sub-goals have. I sent a copy of that to Chris and Scott, I hope that got to the Select Board to look at. I also sent an email to Chris and Scott, basically saying we need, need to get this by September thirtieth to Melissa Cryan with her email address, and I gave a draft of a cover letter that I, maybe best to come to Select, from the Select Board rather than Open Space Committee and in efforts to make this as easy as possible for the Select Board, obviously for you to rewrite as needed. This is what it will look like as it goes through, this is, I didn't, it was like twenty-seven pages, I didn't copy all of it. Chris recently...
Thinner than the actual plan.
Was that?
Just thinner than the actual plan.
Thinner than the actual plan.
Because it just includes an objective strategy.
But I think it addresses well what we've done and why we're building on that. And if we don't get it in, we have to go through the costly process of redoing this whole plan in twenty-twenty-eight, even if it's not perfect, I think we should, we need to get it in.
How about, just for people that are listening, if you wouldn't mind reading the five goals, or just...
Okay, and, and we did ask for input from Select Board, Agricultural Commission, Conservation Commission, Greenway Committee, Highway Department, Parks Commission, Planning Board, Greenway Committee and Water Commission, so we were trying to get input from everybody. So the five major goals, forgive me, let me just pull that up. Goal one, identify and preserve important parcels for ecological, recreation, cultural and historical value to create town-wide green network. Goal two is protect Southampton's remaining agricultural lands, promote local farming and create opportunities for residents to become involved in local agriculture. Goal three is protect Southampton's water resources. Goal four is promote, promote land use policies to protect the town's natural lands and rural community character. Goal five, promote adequate recreational facilities to serve a variety of needs for all residents of Southampton.
Okay. None of those, there are many strategies and, and...
There's, the action plan is details of action strategies, some of them are carryovers, definitely new ones. So part of this, I'm not going to be able to work on this past this week because of personal things going on, so I was hoping that we would get a vote to approve this, even if there's minor tweaks after, more editing tweaks, and that can work with Chris or Scott to have the Select Board submit the final plan.
Right, no, I think you've done a great job putting these together and especially the, the town-wide progress since twenty-twenty-one, that's a pretty impressive list of, of things that have been accomplished already.
Lot of help from other people.
It's great to see. So I think what, so I believe what you're asking for is a motion that would allow us to approve or allow this to be submitted to the powers that be, right, for the...
I think at this point, it's, the, the letter was written, was being submitted by the Select Board, if you don't think it should be that way and should be Open Space, that's fine, we can just have to decide...
No, I think it should be a Select Board letter, I think that would be appropriate.
So ideally, approval by the Select Board for submission.
I'll move to approve it as presented and to allow grammatical changes as necessary and that the Chair be authorized to sign the letter of support on our behalf to submit.
To submit it to the State to meet this special opportunity. Yeah, so it's not just a letter of support, but it's actually a letter...
It's the transmission. It's the transmission.
Right, exactly. So thank you.
Transmission to the state.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you for your support.
With grateful thanks. You identified a real opportunity. Now enjoy your vacation.
And I think too, if you do make a few tweaks before you depart, here and there, just shoot it back to us, and we'll put it up. I think we should get it up on the website.
Yeah, once, once it's finalized, we should get it up on the website. The, the existing open space plan is on the website.
Right. But even, even just the part that talks about what you guys have achieved so far, that's, that's, that in itself is pretty interesting, because we don't know how long it's going to take them to approve this, too. So even as a draft update, I think it would be good to get up on our page. But it can wait till you return to town, too, so.
Can I address something I think that's later on the agenda, which, just because I need to step out, about the TIP program? The Greenway is on the twenty-twenty-nine TIP program. It's been approved for that, so.
The Greenway is?
The Greenway is. So that's good news.
That's no bad news.
That's, that's good news, given everything going on.
Shoving a year here and there, but we'll get there eventually.
I just, it's out of order, but I'm just.
No, that's fine. That's good to know. All right. Thanks, Mark, and thanks to the Open Space Committee for all the hard work on this, and especially reaching out to the various departments and various boards and commissions that are involved in this. Thanks. All right.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Scott Seibert, Town Minister, South Hampton Franklin Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board Member for the remainder of fiscal year twenty-six.
Second.
Okay.
And authorize the chair to sign.
Without the paperwork? Yeah, okay. Yeah, just to comment on that, we, I guess, I had thought that we had already done this, but that was a year ago, so that time already ran, ran quick.
Why Franklin, Madam Chair?
They handle both.
They handle, they handle us, Franklin Regional Transit Authority.
Franklin handles our senior ban.
Right. That's what this is, partly. I mean, being part of that.
Thank you for saying that.
Yeah, that's part of what this is.
We are otherwise in the Pioneer Valley Transit Region, and we do not participate with them. I think that's an important point of clarity. It blew my mind when I joined the board.
PVTC, you mean?
Pioneer Valley Transit, or PVTA.
PVTA. Yeah, I mean, they're talking about having a stop here in Southampton, maybe if they have a stop somewhere they're headed, because they go through here to go to Westfield. So there was talk about having a, a stop in Southampton, but there never has been.
Yeah, there's a train coming through, too, to Boston.
But anyway, no, we, we have been part of, yeah.
If we want that to happen, we can apply some local leadership.
Well.
On the motion?
But just on the motion, so that it's clear, this is for our senior ban. It was not cleared me, and was manifestly confusing last year, so I second this.
All right, right. So this is a Franklin Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board member. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. And I will work with Scott. We'll get the paperwork submitted, and I'm sure there'll be a meeting coming up soon, the way they're doing their things here. Okay. Land use planning update, Scott, anything?
So this is a notoriously difficult time of year to get more than two people in a room together. So Dotson and Flinker and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, they've been working hard on the, getting close to the final stages. We just have to get together for another meeting to kind of give them some guidance. So we're hopefully, I think it was in about a week, week and a half, that we're looking to try to get together, the core group, and go from there.
And then we're still going to need another public meeting, which I think, you know, based on our discussions, it might be good to aim for a Saturday if we possibly can.
Yeah, and after a special town meeting.
Right, you know, so it's early October, whenever, so we can do that. That would be great. Okay, so that'll be your internal working group that will have a meeting. Okay.
Yeah, the internal and the, the larger group as well, I think.
And it was in that context that came the question about, at the end of the day, we're going to have a development program. We are going to create new impacts, and we know that Route ten is not as safe as it ought to be. And so it was mentioned at the, the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization of the Pioneer Valley Planning Association, of which we are a member and an associate delegate to the MPO, that each participating community is entitled to two free traffic counts per annum. And where else would we want to do it but here? Okay, so that's from the peanut gallery. We obviously need a police chief and a road superintendent, if not the fire chief as well, to say that's obvious and get the damn thing scheduled. Thank you. So that was other business. And I would move that we send a letter to the Pioneer Valley Planning Association requesting a traffic count as part, or assistance, if you want to be more general, in developing baseline traffic understanding for one-seventeen, one-twenty-five College Highway.
And maybe another location as well, if we have two allowed.
No opposition.
But I think we can, you know, reach out to the police chief.
I haven't heard that we've claimed anything in years.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay. So we can, we can also reach out to the police chief and highway superintendent to see what else is out there for other, other priorities that they might have, too, that they had not focused on. Go ahead, John.
Was that a motion?
It was.
It was a motion, okay. To reach out, to reach out and.
Pioneer Valley Planning Association.
Yeah, request one of the two free traffic studies be coordinated and done at that location.
Right.
If I can offer an amendment, subject to no reason not to, by the fire chief, police chief, and highway superintendent, i.e., it falls under jurisdiction of the state highway, and they couldn't do it anyways. But assuming no objection from those three individuals, that we transmit the request officially. Second.
All right. All right. So we have motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Good idea, I think.
Are we under, we're under any other, right?
Just two seconds on the two-fiftieth anniversary, just to say thank you for everybody who came. We had a great birthday party a week ago, Saturday, probably close to three-hundred-and-fifty people, I think. Great music, great food. I think everybody had a, had a good time. We've got a couple of events coming up in September. One is this coming Saturday, a talk at the Senior Center by Judith Miller Conlon on the West Part Cemetery, and then another one at the library on September twenty-fifth, also looking at burial grounds in Southampton. So September tends to be cemetery month for whatever, but we have two, two good speakers for those events. So please follow your calendar and Facebook and whatever else will get the word out. There'll be some flyers around town as well.
It was a fun event.
Yeah, it was a great event. I think it was well attended. People had a good time.
So I, I have two things under any other business.
Yep.
I will state, and then if there's support, make a motion. But I believe in light of the discussion that we've, we've had tonight, and we had previously, and what's going to be discussed next Tuesday at the special meeting of the select board and the finance committee, I believe we should formally take a position to implement a hiring freeze to all departments and functions that fall under the control of the select board, with the exception that the fire department maintain its, attempt to maintain its current staffing of two paid paramedics, if possible, and that the police department maintain its existing staffing, i.e., if an officer was to resign, the police chief is empowered to backfill that position. But no additional, and no other departments.
So the two emergency departments, public safety departments?
Yep.
Is that a formal motion, or is that it's just for discussion, and we take it up next Tuesday? Or how would you like to handle that?
Well, I don't know. I mean, if, if we need more time, if we want to get, I won't be here next Tuesday.
Okay, that's right.
But in, in saying that, I realize that we have to deal with the gas inspector. So I would deem the inspector's job to be public safety, and that job needs to either get backfilled or assigned to another community. But we need the service, or there might be already a solution there. But that mean, any opening positions, the highway department that aren't filled right now, we're not filling them. Not filling them without coming back to this board to be approved.
Would it be appropriate, before we move forward with filling any position, have the select board approve it first before going through the hiring process? And that just applies to any position, public safety, or.
Well, I'm okay with that. I just don't want to, we have a, you know, on the night shift, there's two police officers. I don't want to go down to one police officer on the midnight shift. I don't, I don't think it's good. Others may disagree with me, but I, so I, I want that carve out there. We, we need the paramedics. I know we have one, whether we're going to get that other one or not, but I, I don't want to start, stop that process if need be. But everything else, I think it needs to come to the select board for approval before.
Why don't we make it that it comes, you know, whether we call it the hiring freeze or whatever, but at least it needs to come to the select board for preapproval before going out and doing any of these kinds of other, other recruiting actions. I think that's probably a safe bet. We, we definitely are up against a, a wall with this insurance cost, and, you know, hiring other people is not going to be the name of the game for a few months, for sure, I think, unfortunately.
So I'll make that as a motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second thing is giving, you know, I know it's early, and we're out there, but we're going to have to deal with this insurance next year. And we, we've still got the deficit from the failed override at Norris, which is only going to compound. And we've got the other issues that we have to come up with. By my, my tally, we're going to need a million to a million and a half dollars from the existing budget. And that's after our two and a half percent increase in growth comes in. So I believe that the select board should formally notify all department heads that for next year's budget, you should prepare for a ten percent reduction and a fifteen percent reduction scenarios. And, and we can go up from there, but start, don't wait till March or April to start thinking about it. Put them on, put them on notice now, where is it? And also, not only in the form of a reduction, but is there a reduction that could happen because we could handle services differently? Whether, whether it's regionalizing, or, you know, it, I've said it before, and I'll say it with a water commissioner sitting here. We have a two-person department in town here. East Hampton's our backup. Why are we continuing to have a wire department? Why aren't we contracting with East Hampton to do that? I'm sure there's reasons on both sides to do or not to do. But let's start doing the work now, because we're going to, we're going to have, best case, a million dollar shortfall. Worst case, I think it's going to be more around two million dollar shortfall in our budget. And it's going to come out of staffing. And I would argue selfishly as, as a school committee member, that Norris already took their hit of the six hundred thousand. So it's got to be on the town side, and we're at twenty-one million dollar budget. It's a ten percent cut.
Scott, any thoughts about that? I mean, when you were going to put out a budget, call it the start budget process for.
Yeah, I have it on the agenda for next week to start the, to talk about the budget calendar, but also some guidelines, as well as start discussing guidelines for the town, so.
Yeah. Do you need the, I mean, you've heard the discussion. Do you feel comfortable just having it like that, or do you want it as a formal motion, or?
I, I, I think when you're looking at those types of reductions, I, we have a small enough budget where we can actually look through it and target it. I mean, a ten percent out of our town clerk's budget is a lot different than a ten percent out of our highway. I mean, and outside of, you know, salary, there's really not much that you can do except for salary. Whereas, you know, highway department, you know, they have several hundred thousand dollars that you could do, like, equipment and things like that. So I, I think we have an opportunity, if we are going to look at such reductions, to maybe do a little bit more targeted.
So it would be reductions, but not necessarily ten or fifteen percent across every department, is what you're saying? That's.
Right, I think it's, yeah. I, I think it's just a matter of looking at it, and, you know, it may, rather than, I, I would look more of a targeted approach, rather than a little bit out of a lot, maybe, you know, places where we can take bigger chunks.
Yeah, because, I mean, there's lots of ways to look at it, and not necessarily in favor, but needs to be explored. I mean, a while ago, again, back in, what, the seventies, we went to a four-day work week here at Town Hall. Do we need to go three days? And, you know, benefits are an option, meaning, hey, the assessors' office is open two days a week, town offices are open two days a week, sixteen-hour employees, and, you know, we're going to have to put a plan together, because we need to, we need to assume the worst. And the worst is that the over, there's going to be an override, and that the override is not going to pass. So we need to have that game plan as a worst-case scenario.
Good point, okay. So I think at this point, I'd, I'd rather let you have the first foray with, with your town department. You have a, usually a, a department head meeting this week, anyway. You'll have it on Thursday from the.
I actually have to cancel it this week, so.
Oh, okay, next week, that's. But I mean, to, to basically, you know, update them with what has been discussed at select board meeting. Let you start there, but then we can bring it back, and if we need to do a formal motion on that. But I think you've got the sense of, we're kind of all feeling that, that need, that we realize that it's going to be a tough year ahead, and that budget cuts, however we can do them, need to be the name of the game.
I mean, I think John's a hundred percent correct. If you look at just the insurance costs, assuming nothing else happens, we're going to be half a million dollars in the hole just for insurance costs, plus whatever increases we get from there. We also have fifty thousand dollars that we've got to pay for debt for the heating system. We have a hundred thirty thousand dollars in free cash from, from the CARES Act. We have the hundred fifty thousand dollars that we owe to Norris School for the other stuff. We don't know what Hampshire Regional assessments are going to be for the upcoming year as well. We also have contract negotiations for the police union, and I'd, I'd like to at least, you know.
Contract negotiations with the teachers.
Yeah.
Teachers, so.
And I also think that, part of me bringing this up is if, if we did, whether we informally support it by not objecting to the number tonight, but, or vote on it, that that message be sent to Hampshire Regional and to the other towns at the meeting that they're looking to have, that this is the direction that we're going in. We're planning for the worst, hoping that we don't get there. But, so Hampshire Regional, we're expecting a, a ten to fifteen percent reduction in the budget. And on that note, with that resignation tonight, there's at least two, if not three, empty seats from Southampton.
On the school committee?
So Southampton has six votes there. We're down to fifty percent. We need, we're going to need those seats filled for this next budget cycle, if Southampton's voice is going to be heard through that process.
Okay. Good point.
Otherwise, what good is fifty-five percent of the vote?
Right.
If you don't have the bodies there to cast the vote.
Yeah, we definitely have got at least two vacancies, and maybe a third now with this one. So we definitely need people to be stepping up to be on the Hampshire Regional School Committee. So we'll keep pushing that one as well. Let's, let's, let's not assume, but how about we make that an assignment for Scott to make the, this, the, whatever, the, the gist of our conversation known to Hampshire Regional and the superintendent and so forth, that this is where we're going, and so that they, they're not caught unawares, that this is how we're starting out as the biggest town that contributes to their budget, and other, and maybe copy the other town, town finance committees or administrators on it. Okay. All right. Good points. Thank you. We have a couple of PCFs.
I move to take up PCF for Mackenzie Williamson, Fire Department resignation effective May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
I move that we take up PCF for the Fire Department for Carrie Lang, new hire EMT as needed, non-benefitted, twenty-one sixty-three, and yield to Fire Chief Fosoli to make his
Rich Fosoli, Fire Chief. I submitted this PCF two months ago. PPP Board has not been able to meet for the last two months, so that's why I'm here tonight for Carrie Lang. She's a ten-year EMT, recently moved to town. It'll be a per diem position, no benefits. So she just gets paid, you know, if she picks up a shift. So.
Great.
Has she already started? Do we need to vote, make this retro?
What's that?
Has she already started? Do we have to give this a retro date?
No, no, she hasn't started. She's been waiting the two months.
Sorry about that. That just compounds our, our comments about the Personnel Policy Procedures Board. Okay. So let's have a motion, then. We have the motion.
There's a motion, second on the floor already.
Well, you made a motion to consider, and I would second a motion to approve.
There you go.
Okay. All right. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor of Carrie Lang?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Consider that. I will sign the PCF tonight. Thank you.
I move we approve the minutes of the select board meetings held July twenty-two and August five, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
Second.
All right. I think there's just a couple of small typos, and I can work with Judy on those. There's nothing major. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Both minutes are approved. Old business. How are we coming on any audit issues, Scott, from FY twenty-three, currently for FY twenty-four? I know we probably need to get our auditors on the schedule for coming in to talk to us on the FY twenty-three one?
Yep. So I, so I sent the, the draft for the FY twenty-three, which we received last, last week. I wasn't sure if we wanted to try to have them in, in September or October.
I think probably October. Don't you think? We've got a lot going on for September. I'm going to say early October, maybe.
Okay. And then we're still going along with the FY twenty-four, so.
Yeah, if FY twenty-four happens to be done by then, they can do both.
Yeah, right. You're right.
Just giving Megan a chance to catch up on years of.
Yeah. How, how is, how is things going? Is she able to get some of that stuff over to the auditors for FY twenty-four, or not yet? Are we?
I, I do know that some of the things, I have to double check, some of the things were. I do know that some of the things, I have to double check, some of the things were updated in the program, but we have made progress in some other things, like we met with the superintendent and, and the business agent for the school, for Hampshire Regional, talking about improving the processes for payroll, and they, they agreed to set January as the deadline for changing over electronically, as well as improving that process, so that'll be a big help for the Treasurer's Office. We are going to, after that, we're going to talk about warrants and the purchasing of Norris School, but we wanted to set that as the first goal.
So that means Hampshire Regional Business Office would use our Vadar system for payroll? Or Harpers?
Norris would use Harpers.
Harpers, I mean, right. And right now, it's all manual?
How much time do we have? So...
I know it's convoluted, but...
So, yeah, so Norris, right now, hand writes, or at least uses an Excel sheet to do the payroll, which they send to Central Office, which they then convert into their own system of infinite vision, as, then take that and they send it to us, in which we then manually enter into our payroll of Harpers.
Wow.
So instead, it's, it should be Norris into Harpers, Harpers electronically to the town, town approves everything, as well as the accruals. So right now, the accruals is a separate system, so sick vacation, all that stuff, that's completely different. And then that would be generate a report that we would just send to Central Office for their own bookkeeping.
Well, that sounds like, that sounds like a simplified system, which, my gosh, if we can not have to handle things five times over, that should make things...
Sounds like the current system is impossible to ensure accuracy and time.
Correct, I mean, I think that's part of it, it's just, you know, the level of, you know, picking up and touching and, and moving again and doing manual entry, I mean, it's inevitable that mistakes will get made.
It's from the 19th century.
It's still better than what it was two years ago.
Well, true. Slow, slow progress, okay, good.
It's the Ebenezer Scrooge.
Our famous ADA door openers?
Just waiting for the debit card. I just have to work with Megan on getting that, she's just a little reluctant on such a large amount for her.
They haven't actually been purchased yet?
Not yet, no.
Okay. Any work on the Stormwater Enterprise Fund?
No.
And we heard about the Greenway Tip for '29, so that takes care of that. So we have, just on our calendar, we have Select Board meetings coming up for the 16th, and the 30th is the town meeting, special town meeting on the 30th, but we do have a joint quarterly, for our first quarterly meeting, Select Board and Finance Committee on September 9th, and that'll be also at 6, 6 o'clock here. I think that's what there is for that.
Madam Chair?
So we will go into executive commission, uh, sorry?
Just want to remind you of my absence on the 16th.
16th, thank you.
Yeah, I know we're struggling with a short committee.
Yeah, thank you for...
Oh!
And Johnny, you're out on the 9th, right?
Yeah, I'm out on the 9th, but we don't, we don't need to do anything for the special town meeting, but if Article 1 passes, that's going to trigger special election, at which time the Office of Select Board will be added, correct? Okay.
So, so if it does pass on September 30th, we just have to do a quick meeting and call for the special election.
For the election, right. Yeah, so that would be a Select Board vote to call for the election.
So the, the, I'm looking at my calendar now, so the 16th, I will be in Boston. So it doesn't look like there'll be a quorum. Well, there won't, there won't be a quorum.
All right, when is anybody back around?
I can do the 20, I can do the following week on the 23rd. But if we're going to be done 30th...
Well, we're probably going to need something in between here, so 23rd instead of the 16th?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe. Stephen, are you around the 23rd?
Yes.